Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting of the 27th of April 2023, here in the Council Administration building. It's 1pm. I call for attendance. I can see all councils are in attendance. Good afternoon. I'll move straight to an acknowledging country and I'll ask Council Kunselman.
Thank you, Mayor. We recognise that there are traditional custodians of this land on which we meet today to make important decisions. The spirit of those traditional custodians is with us today as we try to make the best decisions on the use of the land and the resources in this area. We pay respects to those traditional custodians, acknowledging past and present leaders and the encouragement of new leaders as they emerge.
Thank you very much, Council Kunselman. We now move on to opening prayer. I'd like to invite Pastor Carl Motzelberg from the Catalyst Church to come to the lectern. Thank you, Pastor. Do you mind introducing yourself?
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, well, good afternoon, Mayor and councillors. Pastor Carl Motzelberg from Catalyst Church at in Brussels and pleased to represent the Christian churches in Ipswich today, so if we can pray together. Heavenly Father, your love for the people of the city of Ipswich is evident in the life of Jesus Christ. Your desire is for this city to reach the tremendous potential that you have in store for it. So as this meeting today is opened, we pray for our mayor and councillors that you would impart your great wisdom and understanding to them this day in the decisions they face. The Bible tells us to seek the peace and prosperity of the city, so we take the chance to pray for the great city of Ipswich with confidence that you hear our prayer. We pray for your favour, that you would increase the grace that has been shown to this city. We pray for an abundance in economic and physical security. But most importantly, we pray for the people of Ipswich. We pray for the wellbeing of the individuals and the families that live here, the very people that you love and care for. Let the decisions made here today reflect the value you place on each and every one of them. We pray these things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Carl. We don't have any apologies or leave of absence. There are no condolences, no tributes, no presentation of petitions or presentations and deputations. And there are no public participations. So we go into item 10, which is the matters of public interest, and I'll hand over to Council Kunselman, who would like to put forward a matter of public interest.
Thank you, Chair. Mayor and councillors, I bring to your attention a matter of public interest. On the 19th of May 2022, Councilman Marnie Doyle moved that council instigated domestic and family violence strategy. With the support of councillors, council has expended considerable resources on an integrated service response, devising a webpage, revising policy within our own workforce, and providing education and raising awareness. Council in this respect is endeavouring to be a model employer in relation to the safety and wellbeing of staff. Council's role also is as connector and community leader, part of an intention to contribute to a safe and inclusive community. May is Domestic Violence Month. We concentrate attention on the matter of domestic violence and its effects upon our community. Council is proud to participate in the Switch Speaks Out Domestic and Family Violence Summit from the 3rd to 5th of May. This summit draws together practitioners and members of the public. Sessions will include evidence-based practice and inspiration on how to respond to domestic and family violence and strengthening the local community response. These sessions are for members of the community, not just practitioners. Community members can learn how to identify victims and what is an appropriate response when domestic and family violence is revealed. The remembrance ceremony on 1st of May is a local, inclusive, family-friendly, community event to raise awareness and to remember those who have been affected by domestic and family violence. We remember particularly those who have died and those who continue to suffer. From this summit, practitioners will draw strength to continue the struggle, and I speak here of the Domestic Violence Action Centre, the Integrated Services Working Group, but also, excuse me, police, hospitals, general practitioners and councillors. And the work of the Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Council is acknowledged. Domestic and family violence continues to plague our community and use up resources. There is a shattering effect on those vulnerable groups, including those with disability, children and young people, on First Nations people and those who are culturally diverse. The mental health outcomes for those affected adds to the torrent of outcomes that diminish our community. The intention of Ipswich City Council to continue to work in this area is confirmed.
So, thank you, Council Kunselman. I'll move on to the second matter of public interest. It's from myself on managing inappropriate conduct referrals from the Office of the Independent Assessor. So, given the ongoing media interest in this matter and its relevance to a previous council decision, I table a letter sent to me by the Department of State Development Infrastructure Local Government Planning Director General, Mr Mike Kaiser, regarding how councils must manage inappropriate conduct referrals from the Office of the Independent Assessor. In the interest of openness and transparency for our community, I will read the letter and then I'll table it. This I received on the 13th of April and this was sent out to all the councils on the 14th of April. Dear Councilor Harding, the Department of State Development Infrastructure Local Government Planning, the department is aware of the challenges faced by councils in dealing with inappropriate conduct matters referred to councils by the Office of the Independent Assessor. The department is aware that a significant proportion of these complaints are made by councillors themselves and the sensitive therefore which arise in other councillors deciding these matters. I'm aware that some councils are not dealing with these matters as required under the Local Government Act 2009, or alternatively seeking to refer the matter back to the OIA to decide. Given the difficulty some councils are facing in dealing with these matters, the department will be providing further training and support to councils to assist in meeting these statutory requirements. Further information will be available on this support in due course. Information will also be part of the department's proposed induction training for councils elected in 2024. In the meantime, I'm writing to you to confirm a number of key points regarding how councils must manage inappropriate conduct referrals from the OIA. Dot one, under section 150 AF of the Local Government Act, councils must investigate all referrals of inappropriate conduct from the OIA. All councils must have an investigation policy for investigating inappropriate conduct matters. The investigation can be as simple or as complex as considered appropriate by council. Councillors have a number of options for dealing with a matter, including mediation, investigation by a council or investigation by an external entity. A list of preferred investigators can be obtained from the department to assist. Dot point two, it is not possible under the Local Government Act to send the referral back to the OIA to decide or take alternative action unless in investigating a matter misconduct is identified. And dot point three, the OIA may, in referring the matter to council, make recommendations about how matters are to be handled. These recommendations must be adopted unless council passes a resolution stating reasons for a different approach. Councillors must decide the outcome after the investigation is completed. I acknowledge the sensitivities and the difficulties which arise in making a decision for that. And for that reason, the adoption of recommendations made by an independent external investigator is strongly encouraged unless there are clear grounds to decide on the contrary. However, ultimately, this is a decision for the council to make with no role for either the department or the OIA. All council decisions must be made in an open council meeting to ensure transparency and effective process has been followed and all decision-making is was conducted in the public interest. Finally, where a councillor has referred a complaint themselves to the OIA, not as a complainer, but simply to comply with their obligations to refer matters under section 150 R of the Local Government Act, this in itself does not mean that particular councillor has a conflict of interest in then deciding the inappropriate conduct complaint. I acknowledge this is a difficult area and, as always, departmental officers are available to assist councils in handling inappropriate conduct matters and ensuring statutory obligations are met. If you require any further information or would like to provide information to the department on what particular tools or resources you think would assist councils respond to inappropriate conduct matters, please contact your regional advisor and those details are listed. Thank you. I'll now move on to item 11, declarations of interest in the matter on the agenda. Are there any declarations of interest? Yes, Council Tully?
I have one.
Yes?
In relation to Government Transparency Committee Report, item 10, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, councillor Paul Tully, informed the meeting that I may have a declarable conflict of interest in that item. The nature of the declarable conflict is that I'm a former president of the Goodna Rugby League club and that motion, of course, is in relation to provision of a lease. I don't have any current connection except as an ordinary member of the club and I invite other councillors to decide if I can participate in the decision-making process.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate you declaring that. Do you receive a personal or a financial benefit from this organisation?
No, I'm not on the committee. I'm just an ordinary member now and that has been the situation for the past three years.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of Council Tully? No? In that case, I move that Councilor Paul Tully participates and votes on item 10 of the Governance and Transparency Committee agenda. That item 10 is called repeal of previous council decision and proposed new trustee lease over 135 Brisbane Terrace Goodna to Goodna End District's Rugby League Football Club because there are no personal or financial benefits to Council Tully. And therefore, a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Kunselman. Any discussion? I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous noting that Council Tully did not vote. Thank you, Council. Are there any other declarations of interest?
Thanks, Mayor. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Andrew Fekner informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town of Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, Council Fekner. Are there any other declarations of interest? Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Jacob Mattson informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6 titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and our building, the Ipswich Trades Hall is immediately adjacent to council's redevelopment. As a result of my conflict of interest, I'll leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any other declarations of interest? Thank you very much. We'll now go on to item 12, which is the confirmation of minutes. And item 12.1 is the confirmation of minutes of the last ordinary meeting. Does anyone have any... Sorry, I'll move the fact that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 23rd of March 2023 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Milligan. Any errors, amendments, corrections? Anyone like to point out? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 12.2, which is the confirmation of special meeting, and I move that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 28th of March 2023 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Kunselman. Any amendments, errors, corrections proposed? Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I've just got a question. Has any response or communications been entered into by the state since that meeting was finalised?
I'm here too. Sorry, I've seen. No correspondence has been received by me as the CEO or the organisation, so no resolution, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other queries? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Item 13, there is no merrill minute. 14, there is no business outstanding. So we'll move on to item 15, which is the reception and consideration of the committee reports which came to us last week. The first one is item 15.1, and I move that the council adopt the report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the 18th of April 2023. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Doyle. Any amendments, corrections, omissions? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item 15.2, which is the report of the Governance and Transparency Committee. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how he would like this matter, the report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recommend that all items in the report be voted on and accepted with the obvious... Can't think of the right word. Whatever the opposite of inclusion is, with the exclusion, exception of item two, where my colleague councillor Ireland wishes to pass some comment and there's some words to amend.
Thank you very much. So you've moved all items except two. And do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any corrections, amendments? No, two.
Item two, okay.
Yep. Thank you. Any discussion? No? Put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried.
So I'd obviously like to move the A and B on screen with the B completing the amendment as required.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council John E. And I'll open things up for discussion. I think, if it's okay, councillor Ireland would like to speak first, I think. Is that okay? Is that okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. In relation to item two of the Governance and Transparency Committee, I move that the following amendment, that the fee for an entire dog remain unchanged. In this day and age with all the costs going up, I know it's a small fee, but the cost of registering entire dog is really going to stop some people from registering, in my opinion. So I would like it to stay unchanged.
So you're proposing, I guess, a recommendation C? Is that correct? Was that your...
C. I have to have a look. I'll just see. Hang on, I'm sorry. Uh, no initial.
Have you forwarded anything to the minute clerk?
Yes, that's it. Thank you. I had to read it.
Do you wish to be specific with the financial year potentially included, rather than an open-ended resolution in perpetuity?
Is that what you'd like me to... Is that what you want me to talk about? Okay.
Have you put the microphone on, please, Council Fekner? I think we're just saying...
Will it remain unchanged forever?
No, for this one, actually.
For 2023, 24?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Council Fekner, for... Well, yes, councillor Mazza, you're the mover. Do you accept that? Or would you like... Should we have some questions and discussions first?
I'm unsure how to proceed. I myself don't actually have a position on that at this moment, but I'd want to do whatever allows people to have a debate on the issue.
Thank you.
So if anybody's willing to provide any advice, I think if it was a foreshadowed motion, perhaps it would allow for a discussion without it being necessarily accepted.
Oh, yes, if you foreshow, it means we have to wait for something to pass in. What I'd like to do is probably ask the relevant council officer, just ask some questions or...
Yeah, sure.
Or I guess I look at the fact that we're looking at moving an amendment.
My dear mayor, I'll just remind you that you're chairing the meeting, so if you believe, an officer asks questions, you're more than... Yeah, that's not a determination for me to make, given I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Obviously, you're the mover and the second. I guess I'm asking you, councillor, do you accept that recommendation or not? And then I'll ask councillor Johnny.
Yes, for the purposes of questions and debate.
Council Johnny?
Yes, for the purposes of discussion, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we now have recommendations A, B and C. In that case. I'll see if you wish to, as the mover, councillor Mazza, for A and B, do you wish to speak to those?
Are you going to conduct a vote for A and B and then we proceed to C? So that's what's proposed. That's fine.
I think that'll be neater if we do this. Are you...
Yeah, I'm happy to... Yeah, I'm happy to move those two. Don't require speaking to them. I think it's self-explanatory.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak to recommendations A and B? No, I'll put those to the.
It's a point of order that A on itself would adopt the dog.
True, thank you councillor Tully.
And then C would, I guess, immediately change it.
Yes, in that case, I'll ask for the relevant council officer to come to discuss item C, please.
Sorry, mayor, point of order, I think we can conduct a vote on C before A and B. It would be unprecedented, but I believe it's allowable.
Thank you. If I could ask the relevant council officer to come to the, like, turn to discuss item C, please.
Just for everyone's ease of use, the proposed changes in prices are on page thirty six of our agenda this morning.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor councillors. My name's Alicia Conorton, manager of compliance.
Ms Conorton, obviously we see differences in fees between an entire dog and a de-sexed dog. Do you mind outlining why that is the case?
I believe it's section fifty two of the Animal Management Cats and Dogs Act, legislates that council's fee structure needs to provide an incentive to de-sex animals.
So that's a state government legislation that we, it's mandated for us to follow?
That's correct. In this case, the fee for the entire dog could remain unchanged and you'll still be compliant with that provision of the, of the act.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of Ms Conorton?
The fee for a de-sexed dog and the current fee for this year for the entire dog and what's proposed for next financial year, please.
I've just got it in the comparative reports, just let me find it, please. Ah, yeah, thank you. So an entire dog, the fee was increased just in line with council's CCI, which increased it by ten dollars. And then if, if it was to proceed, would put the proposed fee up to a hundred and ninety four. But if it doesn't proceed, it will remain as a hundred and eighty four for an entire dog. A de-sexed dog is currently forty one and is proposed to go up to forty four.
Sorry to correct you, that's with a early payment charge. If it does, if it's not by that date, it's an extra thirty dollars for each.
There's probably three wings to it. So there's the pay-by-date, pay-after-date and then the discount if you're registering a brand-new, undesexed dog will still remain as twenty dollars.
Okay. I'll just, if I could, I'll just ask councillor Ireland a question, because obviously it's your amendment, you've put up. Are you looking for all of them to be, to remain the same?
Just the entire dog?
Yes, yes, for the entire dog too.
And I guess my concern is that with the cost of living at the moment, if they don't get it paid on time, it actually goes up to two hundred and twenty four dollars.
Can I just check councillor, you're looking at the pay-by-date, so we're looking at page? I've got to hit, it's page thirty. Five point two, dog registration? An entire dog? A hundred and ninety four for the pay-by, the pay-by date or two hundred and twenty four?
Yes, two hundred and twenty four. I'm just thinking that with the cost of living at the moment, they may not have the money with rates and everything to get everything paid. And so two hundred and twenty four is a lot of money for people who love their animals to, to come up.
Okay, so you're wanting it to stay at two fourteen?
No, one eighty.
One eighty four for pay-by date. Two fourteen for pay-after date.
Yeah, okay. And then would be one for the pensioner?
I didn't want to change anything else.
And just those, just those two?
Yep. Just that one entire dog line, yes.
There's another rate for pensioners as well?
Yeah, I didn't want to change any of the other fees and charges. I thought they were reasonable.
Okay, so just those two. So I might suggest an amendment to the.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, sorry.
Sorry. And I don't know if you'll know this off the top of your head, Ms McNaughton, but the compliance costs to council in relation to management of dogs, do we usually get any funding back at all? Or is that a cost that we carry predominantly?
I don't know off the top of my head. I guess funding back from compliance actions in the animal management area would be from things such as infringements for non-compliance with compliance notices, potentially prosecutions of dog attacks. And I don't know what the figures for that are off the top of my head. I did do some, some numbers on if we, the rate remained unchanged. Just foreshadowing, that was, would be the request. And it impacts the fees and charges or the projected possible revenue for the twenty-three, twenty-four by about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. It's hard to say exactly because it just depends how many people pay by date or pay after date.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Ms Conorton? Thank you councillor Milligan.
Thank you, mayor. Ms Conorton, the, an entire dog, would it be safe to say is generally kept by a breeder? Those not kept by a breeder would generally be those people who, for other reasons, choose to keep the dog entire or for any other reason, they probably wouldn't register the dog. Is it?
I guess there's potentially, people do keep entire dogs for breeding. I guess professional breeders or breeders that are also engaged in showing of their animals, they receive a discount because they have to be members of Dogs Queensland. So there's provision for that. Apart from, if you're not a member of Dogs Queensland, then it basically comes down to you're a backyard breeder and, and potentially you do make money from selling animals, but it's not a recognised activity with Dogs Queensland, so. And then other times, it's just people not wanting to, I guess, expend the money to get their dog de-sexed. So hence why the legislation wants to create an incentive.
Thank you.
What's the price difference? What is the legislative difference between an entire dog and a de-sexed dog? You know, there's a, there's a margin separation for incentives?
No, the legislation just says to incentivise it. So it doesn't say by twenty percent, it doesn't give a specific amount, which is why you're well within the, the frame, I guess, to, to not increase the fee and still be compliant.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms Conorton. We've had a few numbers going around, so I'll just clarify a couple of things. I think, I understand, I think councillor Ireland, you're looking at five point two dog registration per entire dog for the pay-by-date to remain at one eighty five and for the pay-after date to remain at two fourteen, that's my understanding. I note that Ms Conorton mentioned the Dogs Queensland and the breeders. Just so you know, that the registration, if you are a member of Dogs Queensland, is, for the pay-by-date is eighty-two dollars and pay-after is a hundred and, and, and twelve. I also note that the five point three, the dog registration per de-sexed dog is actually forty-four dollars for this one, for the next financial year, is what's proposed. So I guess we're looking at the difference between a hundred and eighty-four and two hundred and forty and forty-four dollars.
Through you, mayor, could I ask councillor?
Yeah, I just, I think you need to look at the comparison page, which is attachment two.
Through you, mayor, can I ask councillor Ireland a question?
Yes, please do.
Just thinking about the discussion around the entire dogs, the mayor did raise it, but I just want to be crystal clear that you're not seeking to maintain the amount for entire dogs for pensioners either?
That wasn't what I, my proposal was, it was simply for the entire dog standard.
Yeah, I think some clarification.
Yes.
I believe some clarification may be required in the motion then, because it just speaks to entire dogs rather than.
So if I could, yes. So five point two, which talks about, that's the dog registration, so you can see the two figures there, one eighty four, one eighty nine.
So.
And then, and if you scroll down, if I ask, if I could just get you to scroll down a little bit further to five point four, which is for the pensioner rate. So I think for councillor, I said you were okay with that costing to be the proposed at eighty seven? So you're just looking at five point two changing, if we scroll back up. Is that what you're asking?
Sorry, yep.
Yep, so maybe look at just tweaking the amendment that you, or the recommendation C, is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Entire dog, do you call that schedule of five point two? That dog registration per entire dog? And in. Attachment two, whatever. Yeah, I don't know what's in there.
He won't get on, but that's fine.
Oh, I think it's okay. Thank you. Again, I'll just check, since we've amended that slightly, councillor Madsen, councillor Johnig, are you okay with that? Just clarifying which fees? Yep, thank you. I guess in discussion, and I, councillor, that talks about the fact that this will be a reduction in revenue of between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. Do you have a suggestion of where we would pick up that money? Or do you, what do you propose there?
Mayor, I haven't looked at the figures. I haven't asked if we had three thousand dogs that were registered as entire dogs. So I haven't looked at that. It was just that it's, I know that it's only ten dollars more per year, but we must be able to pick up ten dollars more per year for three thousand dogs somewhere.
Well, it was, yeah, I guess between thirty, yeah, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand. Yep, thank you. Can I just have your microphone on when you, sorry?
Just saying that, that seems quite remarkably low, that there's that many dogs in that category.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yes, Mr Mayor, oh, mayor, sorry, I still can't.
It's kind of the first few moments, okay?
Probably the most riveting debate we've had in the last three years.
I beg to differ councillor Tully, but please.
I'm a little sympathetic to what's being proposed because as was explained, it is a statutory requirement to incentivise, incentivise the difference. And I've seen that difference grow for entire dogs for a long period of time. And that's a hundred and fifty dollars extra. I guess the other side of the coin is that if we do give that concession and hold it where it is, it might encourage more people to register the dogs rather than not register them. The comment was asked in relation to would it be breeders? That's true, but there'd be a lot of people who can't afford the cost of de-sexing too. They just buy a dog somewhere, somehow for their children. I, I do recall the story some years ago where a person had had its dog de-sexed but had to produce, and it had been many years earlier, didn't have the certificate to prove that. So he brought the dog into the counter of the health department, put it up on the counter and told Jack Barclay, the chief health squire, to have a look himself to, to get the concession. So I'm a little bit sympathetic to this. If, if people wanted to have another amendment in relation to entire dogs for pensioners, I'd, I'd probably vote for that as well. But, yeah, on balance, I'm, I'm prepared to support this in this situation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll put.
Just in relation to animal management and compliance and just looking over our broad financials and noting estimated around three and a half million in animal management for the two thousand and twenty-four financial year from Power BI. I'm not quite sure if that's completely accurate, but that includes employee expenses. And I know that, you know, we've had a number of dog incidents and I just think that we need to look at this holistically. Like councillor Tully said, if we are offering a discount, then we should look and implement that, noting that pensioners do struggle at the same time, but, and looking at our bottom line and the costs associated to us for our services that we need to undertake under compliance action. So that's really important as well, looking at our increases at two percent and two point nine, noting what CPI is. And I know people are struggling, I really do, but we've got this balance that we have to make decisions on. So I don't think that we can just wing this on the fly and cut people out of a necessary negotiation without thinking about it more holistically.
Thank you councillor Johnig. Any other discussion? Just check back with you councillor, anything left to say in, in closing?
No, whatever the decision is here at the council, I'll live with it. Thank you.
Okay, those, so I'll put our recommendation C to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's all but councillor Johnig, thank you. Those against? There's no one as abstaining. Councillor Johnig is abstaining. Thank you very much. Now, I think we're now going on to recommendations A and B. We'll just look at, I was looking at recommendation A, whether we have to change the wording slightly to incorporate the decision made at, at C.
Perhaps to specifically exclude the, exclude the matter referred to in item C. Thank you.
I'll agree to that.
Thank you very much. Councillor Johnig, can you? Sorry, microphone. Thank you. So we have recommendations A and B before us. Any discussion on that? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Now I'm going to move on to item fifteen point three, which is the report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he would like this report managed.
Thank you, mayor. I'd just like to recommend that council adopt the report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, number three, on the eighteenth of April two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second for that? Let's council begin. I'll open up for discussion.
Just some remarks on the activation of the Silver Jubilee Park. Once again, congratulations to councillor Johnig for facilitating a good outcome down there. We did discuss it at committee last week, but the logistics of fitting all of our sporting associations on the limited field space that we have has become a particular, particularly sore point for council in the last twelve to eighteen months. So to try and jiggle things around, to ensure that investment is going into the best possible parks, to ensure longevity in sports played, particularly out there in the eastern suburbs where you represent, that was a really good outcome. And of course, our wonderful Ipswich Youth Advisory Council, we had an update on, on the great work that they're doing and that group are already feeding into decisions that this council is making their part of. They form a consultative panel essentially and they're really excited about the things that matter to us, like the environment, like waste. And they've had their say in our planning scheme as well, which is really great to see them so actively involved this early in the piece.
Thank you councillor Fekner. Any comment councillor William? Thank you.
Yes, with item two, that the activation of Silver Jubilee Park, it's great to see that the Greater Springfield Pioneers Basketball Association, the Springfield Brumbies Basketball Club, the Springfield Touchfooty and the Springfield Rugby Union will be activating there. Councillor Tull and I, what the. and the Springfield Rugby Union will be activating there. Um, Council Tull and I were at the opening. And it was huge with Cricket Wilson Kowaja there. There were thousands of, of kids there and families. And it was great to see the sporting teams have their um little marquees and tents and I think giving information, hopefully they'll be getting more members as well. It was really great.
I'd just say something. I endorse those comments. It was a remarkable turnout for the community there at, at the weekend and the number of people involved. Um, I thought it was really fantastic. You know, it's another large um area developed for the sporting facilities in the uh east, eastern suburbs, um which have been developer inspired in a lot of ways. But even the back, you know, thankfully, it's a fair way from the nearest homes in terms of noise and accessibility. Um, and you've got the mountain just to the, you know, east of that. Um, you know, how good is that with, you know, just covered in uh eucalypt trees? It's a beautiful backdrop. So I'd encourage people um to either have a look at it or if they live in the area to associate themselves with it because it's a, a great development. I was very proud to see that come to fruition.
Yeah, it's one of those, I guess the developer landlords built, built that park as part of their, their conditions for the development there. And I think during the process, it's still, I think, handing over to council at the moment.
Just comments in relation to the basketball team. So they nearly didn't have courts there because they were netball courts in the plan. Um, and so we um had to collect letters from um the basketball, basketball associations and the clubs and then put them through to our planning and to lend lease to get them as a dual purpose court. So that Brumbies um and the Springfield Pioneers could actually use those facilities because we know how popular basketball is and we know that sixteen netball courts are just down the road. Um, and then Dawn and the team as well, working really hard to make sure that we can shimmy some funds where available, save money and strategize in our sports and rec as well. So I just wanted to thank the team.
Thank you. Yes, Council.
I just wanted to clarify something. I believe Council Johnic was also there on the weekend. I'm not sure why she was admitted from your statement.
I was there early.
Oh, I, I was told that you weren't there. Sorry, I, I didn't see you there, so.
Yeah, I'd, I'd seen something where she was very much on site, so just.
My, my apologies, sorry. And, and I guess when we had the official opening, it was just Council Tully and I, sorry. It was not a deliberate exclusion. Thank you. Uh, and I guess the other thing on, on the CCAS papers is the um, uh, the, the reinvigorate, the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council, how invigorate they are. And it's quite interesting to see that they're very interesting in planning schemes. It's a, an interesting, uh, it's um, so it's quite exciting. So thank you very much, um, Council Fekna. Any other discussion or comments? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item fifteen point four is the report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee. And I'll hand that over to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like the report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to um adopt the recommendations of the committee today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Island. Any discussion? I can put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to item fifteen point five. This is the report on the Environment Sustainability Committee. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how he would like that report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I move that council adopt the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee number three of twenty twenty three on the eighteenth of April.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Island. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I do so, even though it contained sad news uh with regards to item four on the agenda regarding the platypus C D N A post flood monitoring follow up.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point six. Just note, oh, thank you. Fifteen point six is the report of Ips, the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. I'll hand it to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like that report managed.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I move that the council um adopt the report of Ipswich Central redevelopment committee number three of twenty twenty three dated eighteen April, twenty twenty three.
Thank you very much, Council Doyle. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Johnic. I'll open that up for discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just um noting the report contains some information on the status of our leasing. And we've, we've seen the results um of, of that with Sushi Ohio finally opening its doors and they're trading really well. Um, this morning, Council Fekna and I welcomed the indie school to the precinct. So um that's a wonderful organisation that provide an alternative um learning experience for about a hundred kids. Um, so, you know, that's a great outcome for the youth of Ipswich and Ipswich families, but also great um on our journey to increasing the footfall um we, within Ipswich Central as we revitalise the CBD. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Thank you. We now move on to item, to item sixteen, officers' reports. And the first one is sixteen point one. The um CEO organisational performance report for March twenty twenty three. Does anyone have any um questions of the relevant council officer on that report? No, in that case, I will move that report. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Fekna. Any discussion? No, I guess just by ways, obviously we had a number of significant matters, certainly with the planning scheme and, and LGIP. And also note that I think on Shapir Ipswich will have a new um consultation, community consultation on, of, for the creative of, of our city as well. So good to see that occurring. If there's no other discussion, I'll put item sixteen point one to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Now to item sixteen point two, which is the improving the planning framework, including the Planning Act two thousand and sixteen, proposed submission. Does anyone have any relevant, does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer on this matter? Nope. In that case, I will move that report. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Tully. Any discussion on the matter? Thank you, Council Tully.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just on one item in, in this response we're proposing to give to the government is in relation to urban encroachment. And that, that is a very difficult issue because over the years, there's a lot of rural industries. They could be sawmills and um many other unacceptable uses in residential areas where they have rights in perpetuity. And um, yeah, that means that urban development um can um encroach very, very close. Um, in, in fact, surround some of these, you know, I think of the um, uh, the um concrete, um, just thinking, and I always forget at, at Dara, the cement works. Uh, you know, at um Stafford was the tannery. Um, they're, they're two examples. We've had others in this, in our area where there's been a sawmill completely surrounded for many years by um residential development. I think the government needs to look very carefully at this. Um, there, there are always two sides to the coin, and one of these is protecting the uses that, that are there. Uh, the other is protecting the environment. And I do recall that Dara Cement Works issue when residents in the centenary suburbs starting to get cement dust, you know, on their roofs and gutters. I think the government realised that um it probably wasn't compatible with a lot of residential development in that area. So I just urge the government uh to tread cautiously and perhaps not embed those u- uses much more and perhaps have uh limited lifetimes, whether they're another ten, fifteen, twenty or thirty years. But if they are truly incompatible with residential development, that needs to be acknowledged and a um, a way forward found.
Thank you, Council Tully. I guess for myself, I look at especially in attachment two, look at the proposal to broaden powers to include the ability for the minister to issue directions to amend planning schemes. I, I do, um, I will be supporting the recommendation here for the submission. It's councils do spend a, a significant amount of time and money and, and we do a lot of consultation of planning schemes. So um I think it's the appropriate, the fact that we will be saying that um that, that the minister's not able to do that, but basically gives us a notice of intention and, and gives us some time to respond to any of those type of things like that, rather than having something forced upon our community. So, and yet I think that's a very pragmatic response that we'll work with the state. Um, any other discussion? Nope. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Sixteen point three is the monthly financial performance report for March twenty twenty three. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Counselors, Jeff Keach, Chief Financial Officer.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Keach. Thank you for this report as well. Um, obviously, we're um dealing with, I guess, global inflation and uh
Yes.
cost of construction. In fact, the, uh, the Prime Minister was in, in Ipswich this morning um out at Red Bank Motorway Estate and, and talked about the impacts of uh global inflation, of his, his term, and the cost of construction. Um, how are you managing, uh, council delivering that and still sticking within our budget?
Absolutely. Um, yes, there are pressures across uh council in a number of ways, just like it is for, for the public. Um, not only in relation to just the CPI, our construction cost indices, as you say. Um, there's a couple of areas where it's particularly hitting us, fuel costs, as we've seen, which we're managing. At the moment, we're still within budget, and that's primarily because we have had some additional revenues in relation to interest revenue, for example, which has helped offset that. So yes, inflation's been high, but also interest rates rose. Um, so that's helped us with our cash balances, but will impact us on our debt balances going forward. Um, at the moment, what we're seeing is we're still um managing our construction costs. Um, they're starting to flow through more into our projects from what we've seen at the moment. Uh, we're slightly behind our spend on our capital overall, and I guess a key impact, I think, that I'll, I expect us to see will be in our budget development for next year. And the key pressures in how we manage both our operating costs. So things like the cost of bitumen, the cost of asphalt, fixing up potholes, all that is increasing quite substantially. And at the moment, we're managing um within our existing overall budget. Our materials and services are higher. Um, but they are offset by some additional revenues. So overall, we're okay. But that is going to put considerable pressure on us, both in next year's budget and our long term forecast, particularly in our infrastructure projects, um as those cost of inflation and those costs of construction increase. Um, and how we manage that will be one of the discussions. We need to pull through the budget discussions in that area, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Keach. Any other questions of Mr. Keach? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move item sixteen point three, that the report on council's financial performance for the period ending the thirty one of March, twenty twenty three um submitted in accordance with section two A four of the local government regulations be considered and noted by council. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Fekna. I'll open that up for discussion. No, just letting you know, obviously, we're now working through the budget for next one actual year, and this is obviously pretty much, you know, very front of mind for us as we look at the, the impacts of inflation and market capacity and supply chains as well. Um, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I now move on to item sixteen point four, and the recommendation that council appointed Deputy Mayor from its councillors until the conclusion of the next quadrennial election in twenty twenty four. But just before I go, I just want to um thank the Deputy Mayor, uh, Council Jacob Madsen for putting his hand up to take on the role of Deputy Mayor of the past year. Um, you've been able to use your role as the Deputy Mayor to raise the profile of several issues, including um an expansion of the Red Bank Plains Library. And I know that, that this was something that you're particularly passionate about for your residents. Um, and so I think your advocacy has gone a long way in delivering um on the ground outcomes for the community in our city. So I know that you'll continue to strongly advocate on behalf of your division of the city, and I thank you for your service as Deputy Mayor. Um, I guess we now move to nominating, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to uh move that the council appoint, Council Russell Milligan is the Deputy Mayor until the conclusion of the next quadrennial election in twenty twenty four.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, Council Quinselman. I'll now open up for any discussion. No?
Uh, I'll happily put forward a, a couple of points about Council Milligan. Um, he's a pretty good bloke. Um, not that that's a qualifying characteristic for the role. Um, he's always been committed to, you know, maintaining a healthy relationship with all of his colleagues. So I think he's well placed to um work with the council in this last twelve months as we all sort of look inward and try to, you know, really get a role on and um accomplish some of the things that we want to see done before the election period commences.
Thank you. Yes, Council Quinselman.
Um, as Council Milligan's colleague, I'd like to uh recommend him to you as a Deputy Mayor and that I appreciate his um knowledge of our division, his um ability to uh make conversation and peace with people and uh his ability to understand the issues. And so I highly recommend him.
Thank you very much. If there's no other discussion, we'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Congratulations. Deputy Mayor. We'll now move on to item seventeen point one, which is a notice of motion, support for proposed constitutional amendment. And this is one from uh Council Tully. So I'll, I'll hand over to you, Council Tully, to, to move.
Yes, I formally moved the uh motion in my name.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So the recommendation.
Sorry, Mayor. Um, I'd like to move a procedural motion for that to be referred to the next council meeting with the intention for the council to have a briefing session from representatives from the Uluru dialogue who were responsible for the formation of the Uluru Statement of the Heart and um the preceding education for the public.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have you got that? Has it been sent to you beforehand? It's okay. I might have to.
So it's for the motion to be referred to the next council meeting.
Yes.
Um, with the council to receive a briefing session um from the party behind the Uluru Statement from the Heart.
Okay, take it on. To the next council, to receive a briefing from the, do you mind, from the? Is it Uluru Dialogue, did you say?
Yeah, I believe that's the body. Um, they're based out of the University of um New South Wales, Sydney.
Called the Uluru Dialogue?
The Uluru Dialogue represents the cultural authority of the Uluru Statement from the Heart Leeds Community Education on the Uluru Statements, Reforms of Voice Treaty and Truth.
Okay, I might get you to. Does that look? Are you happy with that, Council?
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Just through your chair, is that enough time to organise that and get it to the next meeting?
Yeah, I, I believe so, given our status as a council, the eighteenth largest council in Australia. Um, recently learnt that figure um after finding out about Ballarat claiming to be the nineteenth largest city, but that's a completely different topic. Um, we have many more people than Ballarat. Um, yeah, I believe there's enough there. I'm aware of some local representatives who are involved with that organisation. And um after this meeting, I'll be reaching out to them, seeking to facilitate that as soon as possible. Um, just as part of this meeting on the agenda, um it became clear to me that um while I'm very up to date with it, um I think everybody would benefit, including myself, um from speaking to those representatives about the consultation process um that went into the Statement from the Heart, um being able to be um better resourced on where to send people, should they seek more information. And um this should facilitate that for us as civic leaders.
Thank you. I'll double check. I know, Council Tully, you said you were happy with that amendment. And obviously, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, just on a point of context there, uh, the wording is um that the motion be submitted to A next, uh, to A the next council, if we take out A.
To the, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I'll now open up for discussion. Yes, Council Quinselman.
Um, I'm very happy with that deferral. I don't believe there's any impetus or imperative to do this today, so I'm very happy to uh have further consultation. to do this today, so I'm very happy to have further consultation before we decide.
I guess to me, my main thing is, we also have an Indigenous accord working group. I'm very keen for us to engage with them. We, the last meeting on the twenty-fourth of March, we had a brief discussion at the end of the meeting. I think this is one thing that'd be really great, but maybe that's something that'll come out of the briefing session. I guess I'm very keen for us to at least engage with the Indigenous Accord Working Group. I think it'd be very important for us to do that as a council.
Mayor, I support that because I don't think that, that, well, I don't understand the voice, and the traditional owners haven't come and spoken to councillors as a group or to me separately. And most of the residents haven't brought it up with me either, so I think that this is a conscience vote either way, and I don't really want us to push people in one way or the other, but if it's going to be an information session, then I support the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I guess I'll.
I'll just touch on that, and, you know, one of the things I think councillor Tully's motion, which we're referring to the next council meeting touches on, there is some allusions there towards public education. So, I think Ipswich City Council has a role in making sure people know what the referendum is about. Not in pressuring them to a particular vote per se, but as you know, the level of government closest to the people on the ground, I think we have a role in dispersing that information so that people make an informed vote, because as we all know, democracy only works when people are informed.
Thank you. And I think councillor Tully, with your LGAQ policy exec hat on, I think it's an item that went through last year, and I think you had a, did you have a policy executive meeting recently?
Yes, that went through by a majority vote at the local government conference in Cairns in October last year to support this. And it came up last Friday at the local government policy executive. I guess some of the, yeah, without going into the details of who said what, yeah, there were either concerns or people not fully understanding. There was a full briefing about the history of it and the involvement, and it was very beneficial. So, I think if people, yeah, want that sort of information to understand exactly what it means constitutionally, and there are many aspects to this, like, yeah, whether or not that there could be appeals to the High Court, a whole range of issues of what it really does mean constitutionally, and it'd be the opportunity to look at those issues and hopefully have people's questions answered.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I can see, just looking here, I think the item that went through the LGAQ was to make a statement of support for the Uluru Statement from the Heart, an Indigenous voice to Parliament, and then make a right of commission, and to engage with state and federal governments, Indigenous leaders and organisations to develop communication materials to support an informed vote at the proposed referendum, I think it was the LGAQ motion that passed. Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? So, put the amended motion to the vote? Sorry, the procedural motion to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item seventeen point two, which was moved by councillor Milligan, sorry. I guess I'll let you move that, councillor Milligan, you should.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have an amendment to part A to add at the end of it, subject to any typographical errors being corrected.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second for that, for those? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Thank you very much. May I ask Mr Poll to come to the lectern, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor councillors. Ben Poll, General Manager, Community Cultural and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr Poll. Do you mind outlining to us what's the difference between a commemorative sign and an information sign? And also, how many of those information signs have councillors' names on them?
Certainly. I'd estimate there'd be hundreds, possibly thousands, of what you might refer to as information signs erected, produced and erected by council across the LGA. These are either signage in terms of name or places or further information, directional signage would be included as well. The official commemorative plaques, which would be erected for a particular public monument or landmark building, they're a more formal, policy-based commemorative plaque. Sorry, the second part of your question, Mayor?
Just wondering how many information signs are there that have councillors' names on them?
So, the ones that you might categorise as information signs, the style manual or the style guidelines, which is a technical operational guide to how those signs are formatted and what content is carried, does not include the inclusion of a divisional councillor or mayor. To my knowledge, I'm aware of a handful of what you may call information signs carrying a divisional councillor's name or a former divisional councillor's name, a handful of those are in place in Division Ten.
In the former Division Ten?
Yes.
So, it wasn't happening?
Division Four, the former Division Ten.
It didn't happen, to your knowledge, it didn't happen in any other division in this council?
I can't say categorically. I'm not aware of any other information sign carrying the divisional councillor's name.
Oh, thank you. In regards to commemorative sign lines, you know, like those historical ones for the opening, or have any of the names of former councillors or mayors been removed from those?
Now, I'm aware of a number of those commemorative plaques, having been updated recently, within the past six to twelve months. They will always be replicated with the original mayor and councillors or the original information, because they are those formal commemorative plaques.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? Yes, Mr Fekner, councillor Fekner.
Noting the recommendation is backdating to January of this year, how many instances of the replacement of signs are there across the city? What is it likely to cost if we were to enact something like this?
I wouldn't be able to say off the top of my head, councillor, I'm not aware. As it relates to the signs that were carrying former references or references to former councillors, I'm aware of one that was reproduced or replaced last year, last calendar year, so twenty twenty-two. And I'm aware that there's a service request in for potentially two others, but they haven't been executed as yet in respect to if this notice of motion was to be applied to all signage that has been produced since one January twenty twenty-three. I wouldn't say that it would be a significant financial impost to go back and, if there were changes made, fix those changes. Keep in mind, if I may just take it a step further, if we were to implement that recommendation A, then it wouldn't allow for any just general updating. You know, signs might require, there might be additional facilities or embellishments put on a park that might want to be referenced in any information signage. So, I'll just put it out there that there will be, I suppose, a balance in the interpretation of that to allow for new or current information to be added to the sign perhaps, as opposed to removing any references. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, you're saying that we should update an information sign with additional information. You couldn't do that the way it is.
Potentially.
Okay, thank you. I think councillor Tully had his hand up.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, you said there's thousands of information signs, but not many would carry names. Obviously, there's one that's come to mind, obviously. The style guide, is it quiet on that matter, or does it say specifically in the style guide?
No, it's not included. So, it's silent on the matter.
It's silent, so it doesn't prevent the incorporation of a name of a council or a member of parliament, or someone who who's been involved in the matter that's being depicted.
Not at all.
So, it's not the naming, it's not the naming of a park or the naming of a road or the naming of anything, it's just more a signage description.
That's correct.
A descriptor of it.
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Tom, yes?
It's my understanding that it was very differently organised before, and we had separate divisional allocations. And I think that it's my understanding in Division Ten, the councillor put a lot of effort into all of that research with the help of his community, and I think that he's put his community allocation into doing those things, and I haven't heard the community out there complaining that the councillor's name was still there, but I have had some complaints that his name's been taken off.
Sorry, councillor, are you asking a question or are you making a statement?
Well, I just want to know, when did the rules change that we couldn't do it?
Thanks, councillor. No, no rules have changed, it's just when the request from the fields team was put to the marketing services team to replace the sign because it had deteriorated, the marketing services team were simply applying the current style guide, and that didn't, doesn't include that particular reference, so it was omitted in this instance, the instance that I think we're referring to. So, no rules have changed as such, it's just the day-to-day implementation of what is the technical style guide.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Poll?
Yeah, just so I can clarify, the guiding policy or process here was, you're saying, Mr Poll, the operations manual rather than the naming procedures.
Yes, that's correct. That naming and procedures doesn't apply to what is, I suppose, operational information signs. They're governed by the sign style manual.
Yeah, okay. I don't think we actually state that difference within the naming procedures, and, yeah, something to take away very separate today, we might need to look at that to provide further clarity. Because I do know in the background of that naming procedure, it actually says it applies to the naming or renaming. And I don't know if there is an argument that we're renaming by removing somebody's name existing on private roads, parks, in brackets, including individual park features or facilities. So, I think you possibly could attempt to run an argument that it might fit within a park feature being an information sign. So, I think we need to get a bit more clarity and yeah, maybe just tighten up that policy so it's clear.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other questions for Mr Poll? Thank you, Mr Poll.
Thank you.
So, obviously, as the mover, councillor Milligan, do you have anything you'd like to say on this?
Thank you, Mayor. This matter, of course, as we've observed, has been widely reported in the media. And having received contact from my residents, I felt that it was appropriate to bring it forward to council, to be debated and resolved in this place by the representatives from across the city to give direction to the organisation as to how to move forward, so that there is no misunderstanding or anything like that. So, in saying that, I do acknowledge that what is important to the residents of the city of Ipswich is that we fix the roads, mow the parks and pick up the rubbish. So, it would be best if we just deal with this and move on.
Thank you. Councillor, as the second, do you wish to? Make any comment? No? Councillor Fekner?
Just want to flag with the group once more, Mr Poll's comments with regards to the narrowness of the recommendation here and the ability for it to be interpreted that no new information comes. So, if anyone's proposing an amendment, I think now we need to discuss that just so that we're crystal clear with what we're moving forward with.
Thank you, thank you. Councillor Doyle was next?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've just got some concerns around the use of the word existing signage. I think that's too broad, too general, too vague, and we, I believe we need to amend if, you know, if there's support for this notice of motion, we absolutely need to put it beyond doubt that that will not override our naming procedures guide. And that it's just applicable to these information signs. There needs to be some sort of a definition created, I think, for the information sign.
So, if.
I mean, as it stands, I'm sorry, that's existing signage.
Okay.
Is that a park sign, a street sign, an information sign?
So, if that was added to recommendation A, that when council replaces existing information signage, if the word information was inserted, would that satisfy that? I know that you raised some other items earlier.
I'll move that as an amendment.
I'll just, if I can test it with councillor Doyle, since she's raised it, if that's okay?
Okay, right. Sorry, Chair, that's all from me.
So, I'm just, you'd like to add the word information?
Yes.
You mentioned the word existing. I'll just check with the mover and the second on that. Councillor, Deputy Mayor, are you happy to have the word information inserted there?
Yes, Mayor, and I thank councillor Doyle and councillor Fekner for picking up on that important addition.
Thank you. Just hit with councillor Ireland that you're happy to have that, so we.
If we're trying to narrow it down, do we need to say in Division Four?
You don't have, I don't think it's good governance to have one policy in one division and one policy in another one. So, if I could, minute clerk, just to, thank you. I'll speak to this, and obviously, I've spoken with the media about this, but I won't be supporting this notice of motion today for the following reasons, that I'm supportive of council's naming procedure in the signage manuals, that does not allow for councillor names on signs on parks unless they are of commemorative nature. This is standard practice across local governments. For some reason, it appears that, you know, in one division, in one former division, former councillor's name is put up, has been put up on public information signage. I do not know of any other council that does this. I think it's entirely inappropriate and vain for councillors' names to appear on standard public information signs. More importantly, I don't believe that being a councillor gives you the right to use your position of power to put your name on council signs and council assets. I think it's self-serving and it's wrong. I've discussed this with a number of mayors in South East Queensland, and they are absolutely astounded that this has occurred. We don't see state or federal parliamentarians or other former councillors with their names on public information signs around our city. So, why should councils be able to tag their name on signs all over the city? I note that there have been some complaints in the media from a former councillor when an information sign about that park, their name was removed. And I just want to say that it is just an information sign about a local park. And just to confirm that commemorative signs, as Mr Poll said, historic markings, they, such as the civic centre, libraries, club houses, other buildings are retaining the name of the current and the former elected representatives that opened those or did something in that area. So, this is standard practice nationwide, and I think council should be continuing to do that. So, I too have been contacted by many residents in Rosewood who don't think that councillors' names should be on public information signs. In fact, on Tuesday, on Anzac Day, I was at the Rising Sun Hotel, having a few drinks with residents there, and they were very vocal in the fact that, you know, a public information sign is just that, and it shouldn't have the name of the councillors on there. So, I will not be supporting this notice of motion. Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll be supporting this motion. I believe it's a rather low-level motion. It's a pity that the matter didn't come to councillors for consideration, given the sensitivity of the issue before it was, a decision was made at officer level. I think the most significant thing is that this is not the naming of a park or the naming even of an area of a park. Councillor Doyle raised the issue about, you know, could it be something within a park? Yes, and I know of areas where there are playgrounds, for example, which are named within a park. So, there is names within names, but this is quite different. This is an information sign. And as Mr Poll said, with the style guide, it doesn't include. And as Mr. Poll said, uh, with the style guide, it doesn't include, and it doesn't exclude the incorporation of the name. This just sets the, the situation back to square one. If we need to, uh, marry this policy with the naming procedure, I'm happy with that. But I think as a, um, a direction to officers within the council, that, um, it, it's a rather benign matter. Um, it's a, it's a very simple recognition of what a person did in an area for a long period of time. And, um, I think we should just afford the opportunity of keeping the status quo. And then I'd be happy to be involved with all councillors in, in a review to marry the two policies.
Thank you. I think the CEO would like to-
Don't wish to prolong the matter, ma'am, Chair, but, uh, just feel the need to point out that in- information, the way it's worded, information signage i- is not particularly clear direction or, or guidance, whatever word you choose to use to officers, because there is no de- definition of information signage either here in this motion or, or in the, this, uh, relevant procedure that councillor Doyle's referred to, or the signage manual using those words. So it, perhaps the, the approach you suggested of moving to clarify matters in the near future might assist, but it, I just feel the need to point that out.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think councillor Doyle?
Um, thank you, ma'am. Um, I was just wondering if perhaps, you know, rather than having to revisit our naming procedure and to try and deal with it, um, here quickly and swiftly, to put it beyond doubt, do we say in A that when councillor replaces existing information signage, comma, excluding, um, s- excluding, um, signage that would be applicable under the naming procedure? I mean, if we exclude everything under the naming procedure, then we, I, I, well, I don't know. What are we left with? A couple of information signs? Yeah, yeah. So-
I'll just, I'll just see that, that's up there at the moment. When councillor replaces existing information signage, excluding signs that will be applicable under the naming procedure, it will be done on a like-for-like basis, subject to any typographical errors being corrected. I'll just check with the mover, councillor Milligan. Are you okay with that suggestion?
Yes, I'll, um, agree to that.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Island? Thank you. So that's the, they're the active motions now. Do we have any? Thank you very much, councillor Doyle. So just to be quite clear with that, uh, motion, uh, Recommendation A, if this is, so there's an information signage, and it does have the councillor's name on it, the way that it's still worded, it's still saying that it's, that, that councillor's name would be put back on that sign. That's how it's worded at the moment.
Like-for-like.
Yep. Is there any other discussion on the matter? Yes, councillor Dunning?
Sorry, I would just like to add, um, that anyone who contributes to, to something that is obviously excluding, um, commemorative plaques, um, but if they've got, um, put in substantial, um, effort and they've, they've got a link to that and they're a fit and proper person, no matter if they have served on council or have serving on council, um, I don't see why we've got a question mark over including them, especially if the community, um, are happy to see it included as well.
Thank you. So can I put a hypothetical? Let's just say I wish to, um, Nicholas Street Precinct here, to replace the toilet block there. I might want to do some research on the architect and the builders and do an information sign, and I'll put my name on that. That's, I'm just, I'm just saying, this is what-
Just to clarify, you did mention the toilet block, ma'am, is that right?
Yes, I did mention the toilet. I'm just saying, that is what, uh, you know, this would, you know, I'm just saying it's, I actually, like I said, I, I do think it's ludicrous. It only happened in one division. I think that we're all, um, paid to do a job and that is, is reward enough. We shouldn't, I, I still firmly feel that councillors should not be tagging their name on information signs around our city. I think it's, it doesn't happen anywhere else. It didn't happen in other parts of our city. And I think that we should be, um, you know, be consistent in ensuring that, that, um, that that doesn't happen.
Uh, ma'am, just for the, uh, public record, um, if you're seeking anything like heritage listing in those blocks of toilets, I will vehemently oppose such a suggestion. I'm not sure why you brought it up. I think it's a level of what-aboutism that's new to this council.
I wasn't looking at it as a heritage, just as an information, actually, just as an information sign.
I'd just make the point that there's nothing in the council, in this motion or in any other decisions, that allows councillors to unilaterally put signs up and put their names on them around the city. They have to be approved, uh, through council offices. And we're talking about officially approved signage, which is there, um, at, uh, Rosewood and beyond. Um, just to make it clear that, uh, I don't think that example that you give is a real example, uh, in the sense that no councillor, um, can unilaterally put their own signs up on property. Would have to be approved through either a council meeting or through one of our existing, uh, policies and procedures to be signed off by council offices. This is just talking about existing signage, um, which is lawfully there, um, and when it's being replaced.
And I've got, um, the full trust in my councillor colleagues to know that no one's going to be putting their names on something anytime soon that they haven't put full effort and faith in and not broached us yet as a full council about, other than the toilet block, and would support that if necessary.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll have you, councillor Milligan, as the mover, as a right of reply?
Thank you, ma'am. I, uh, I'd like to thank my colleagues for, um, the good, robust debate, uh, which is, um, absolutely what I was, um, looking for. Uh, speaking for myself, um, but it, it has, I, I have listened to both sides of, of the matter, and, uh, I would, uh, on the side of caution and maintain the status quo.
Thank you. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour of Recommendation A and B, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's everyone in the room except for myself. Those against? Myself. Thank you. Okay. Item seventeen point three. No submotion, North East Reserve. Anyway. Okay, so this was put forward by, uh, councillor Madison. Councillor Madison, would you like to speak to it?
I believe, uh, need to move it, ma'am, and I'm happy to move that.
Yes, so would you like to move that? So it's a joint motion, no submotion, sorry, councillor Madison. And I guess in councillor Milligan, would you be seconding, seconding that? Thank you. Uh, the council repeal dot points three and four from the Recommendation D of the council resolution made on the twenty first of May, two thousand and nineteen, from the Growth and Infrastructure Committee, fourteenth of May, two thousand and nineteen, meeting report titled Three, North East Reserve Stadium Design Report. So as the, um, this is moved and seconded, any questions of relevant council offices on this? Nope. Um, councillor Madison, would you like to speak to it?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Um, so I've just put this forward today because, um, in discussion with people in, um, my division, they were keen to understand what council was going to do. Um, we haven't re-resolved a position, um, since the relevant election commitment was secured nearly twelve months ago. Um, I think it's a materially different, um, set of decision-making now that the NRL, um, expansion bid has come and gone as, um, A-League, um, the expansion bids aren't really being discussed. But, um, twenty million dollars is something that's certainly material on a balance sheet. I think councillor John it can confirm that. That would come up as material, wouldn't it? Um, so we've put forward this as a regionally significant project, and there's twenty million dollars there. Well, council should actually look at what we're comfortable with doing, um, under new settings, because it seems ridiculous if we were to not spend a dollar um, because of those A-League and NRL licences not being forthcoming. Um, I should, um, just note that there's a lot of options that can be done as terms of a redevelopment. And I think there's a great opportunity for economic development if it's done right. Um, there would potentially be enough grass sports, um, grassroots, um, sport usage to justify the works. Um, and I certainly prefer grassroots sport to elite sport. Um, so there's, there's something that we need to do here, and I think it's, it's worth having the conversation today. Um, so I look forward to other councillors bringing their, um, ideas to the table. Um, I certainly think that the twenty million dollars is grounds for, um, removing those points three and four from the two thousand and nineteen resolution. Although I'm quite, quite open to any, uh, suggestions from the council today. We just really needed to get it on a, uh, council agenda and have the discussion.
Thank you. Um, councillor Madison, uh, sorry, deputy mayor, as the, um, as the second, do you have anything to say?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I, uh, concur completely, uh, of course. And, um, for us to be able to move forward, um, this is purely, I, I think about just removing an impediment, uh, of a previous resolution, and it's straightforward and simple.
Thank you. I'll speak to this because I think, um, I guess I was, um, before the federal election, um, hosted Senator, uh, Don Farrell here with, with, um, Shane Newman, our federal member for Blair, in discussing how we progress this forward. And we did this with council offices as well. And, um, looked at, um, if there was twenty men on the table, what that would be. So worked extensively, probably a bit like yourself councillor Fekner, on the, um, urban and greening. And, um, obviously we had a meeting earlier this year with, um, councillor Fekner was the chair of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, and councillor, councillor Milligan. And I think we discussed some of those resolutions. We discussed at some stage wanting to, um, I guess, remove the need for stadiums Queensland to manage it, as well as the, um, having the A-League. And then, and I believe that we were going to bring that to council and discuss it. I think that was something that, that committee was, was going to lead. So, um, I'll certainly be supporting this particular no-submotion because that's sort of in alignment with, um, discussions that we've had with the, uh, federal member, uh, earlier this year.
Um, yeah, there's certainly a lot to think about when it comes to the project. Um, you know, I think about our discussions to date and, you know, the group, the will of the group seems to be leaning towards, um, including significant monies in the LTFF on this project. Um, you know, we're also challenged as an elected group that the North Ipswich Reserve's level of embellishment in the local government infrastructure plan never ever foresaw, um, you know, upwards of twenty million dollars being funneled into it. So we're kind of deviating from, you know, the infrastructure plan as it stands to, to make this significant investment. Um, but there's enough will, um, in the group and across the city, um, to really get behind a project like this. When I think about what the North Ipswich Reserve might look like, um, you know, I, I think about, um, the long road that it will take to get us there in terms of those planning requirements. We need to think about what the access to public transport looks like, what car parking looks like, um, you know, funneling people from Bell Street across the David Trumpy Bridge, um, you know, a- all sorts of complications there in terms of accessibility. Um, so I think, you know, when we think about council's investment in this project, I think about the broader network. I think about transport planning. I think about how we get people to the stadium safely before we're actually spending, you know, significant monies on the grounds itself. So just want to foreshadow, may- maybe a tempering of the expectation of what council's, you know, financial obligations are and what our input might look like. Um, this needs to be planned properly. It's something that I have supported, um, since the idea was floated with us. Um, and, and it's a huge and significant investment, um, and delivery on an election promise worth twenty million dollars is something that Ipswich hasn't seen, um, for quite some time. So we should be proud that, you know, that money has been promised to us by the federal government. We need to spend our money wisely and, and invest in the planning, um, around the redevelopment of the North Ipswich Reserve. So today I speak in support of it, um, noting all of those complexities that we have to deal with, uh, as a local government as well.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. Well, I think this is a positive step forward in, um, council's efforts of advocacy to advance the first stage of that redevelopment of the North Ipswich Reserve. Uh, most cities have a comparable size to Ipswich already ha- are home to a, a small but a purpose-built rectangular stadium that allows for the hosting of national and elite-level sporting games and events. Unfortunately, Ipswich has been missing out for far too long. I commend Shane Newman, the federal member for Blair, for his commitment of twenty million dollars to get the ball rolling on this really important project. Today's resolution will see council come to the table with its commitment to redevelopment. And importantly, puts the onus on the state for the state government to consider a commitment to the North Ipswich Reserve as part of the upcoming state budget. I agree with this motion. It needs to happen sooner rather than later, as the window to leverage opportunities and lead up to the twenty thirty-two games is now open but will fast close. It's great that both federal and local government see merit in this project, however, as it is, it's our, however, as the, as it's the state government that holds the responsibility to develop major sporting facilities in Queensland. But I see this motion as a way of continuing to build on the positive momentum that we need to push forward in this project and call on the state to ensure that this is part of its budget consideration over the coming months. You would say?
Um, one last, um, mention, ma'am. While we're calling people out for their support, I think it's, you know, about time the NRL sits around the table with us and talks about what their investment looks like. Because their investment in Ipswich is being put to shame currently by the AFL and what the Brisbane Lions are doing. So it's about time that the NRL puts a bit of money into Ipswich and grassroots football out this way.
Hee-hee. Any other discussion? Yes?
I'd just, uh, utilizing my right of reply, I'd like to extend an offer to yourself, ma'am, and councillor Fekner. Um, I'm willing to drive you both to Queensland Rugby League headquarters and the State Parliament, and I'm happy to film a scene, reenactment. Um, you can fight over being Tom Cruise or Cuba Gooding Junior, but one of you will have to yell out, "Show me the money." Um, I'll just be the cameraman. I'm more interested in directing, um, that, uh, strange bit of publicity. But I think we need to consider new alternatives to highlight that the missing parting here is the state government. And, um, the federal government has certainly put up a tidy sum. Um, also just acknowledging councillor Fekner and the divisional councillors. I think that they'll, um, advocate very well for this project to fit in properly to their community. And one last thing, um, I'm keen for the facilities to provide benefit to sports other than the sports that would potentially be played there. We've got a shortage in Ipswich of elite sporting infrastructure in terms of gym and recovery facilities and access to other sorts of things. And if, uh, the example at Brighton Homes Arena is followed for some, some of those ancillary uses, we would have an elite performance training facility in the east of the city and in the west of the city. And, um, that's probably a contrament to our size. So, um, let me know, um, when you're free, I'll drive you both down. Um, I'll probably shoot it on my iPhone because I'm not willing to really commit any more funds than that. But I'm, I'm willing to edit the video and put it together.
Thank you councillor Madison. I'll, I'll bring them any letters that I've written as well. Okay, since you used your right of reply, it means that, that now goes to, to the vote. Uh, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Uh, item eight, any questions?
Ma'am, prior to following, I'd just like to table a notice of motion for the next, uh, council meeting. Just constitutes to the report that councillor Island and I were required to write as part of our Canberra delegation. I'll hand that to the meeting clerk and, um, forward a copy to all councillors by the end of this week.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. And what's the report called? I'll just, I'll just put the record here. Um, so the subject is Ipswich City, um, delegation to Canberra to promote mass transit solution. By, um, Deputy Mayor Jacob Madison and councillor Sheila Island. Thank you. And there are no questions on notice, so I'll close the meeting at two forty PM. Thank you.